Good, how are you? First floor.
Dan, nice to meet you.
Is there a reporter in uniform that I missed?
Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for May 13th. If the clerk could please read the rule.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Dunbar has an excused absence and will be mentioning this again at the beginning of the council meeting. Councilmember Dunbar lost her mother on Mother's Day and so she had passed away in her sleep and so we want to remember Kathy and her family at this time. So having said that, we will move on to the minutes. Vice President Spatafor.
Sorry, Madam President, my—
That's all right.
There we go. I move the minutes, May 2nd, 2019, from the budget neighborhood meeting and the minutes of May 6th, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes for the 2nd and the 6th. Are there any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for the public to make public comment. If you have a comment that you'd like to make, if you could please come to the podium, give us your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Loretta Stanaway and I passed out a packet of information to each of you. It includes a copy of an email from the Board of Water and Light Secretary to the Council Chair on May 1st stating that, among other things, 99 percent of the plants from the original Cooley Scott Sunken Garden were salvaged and out of those, 99 percent of the salvaged plants, 99 percent were surviving and would be soon transplanted into the new Cooley or into the new Scott Park Sunken Garden. I went over there on the 7th and took several pictures, which are in your packet there, showing that there were a couple of thousand, maybe $3,000 or so worth of brand-new nursery stock plant material in containers from the nursery, being planted and waiting to be planted in the new sunken garden. The original material, what there is of it, is still in the two beds that run north and south and are south of the pavilion at Cooley Gardens. Those plants are there. Whatever they did move is still there and they are alive, but nothing has been moved from that site to the new site. Everything that has gone into the new site so far is new material. So the questions are, why did we continually get told by the Board of Water and Light from day one that they would salvage and replant the original material from this sunken garden into the new garden? And why did they still, as late as May 1st, make that statement when they had obviously ordered material that was new and had to have a RFP and a bid process? I'm not sure how that took place. I do know that—I took a quick look at Mitten and in a fast glance through that, I did not see an RFP there. I do know that talking to people at Cottage Gardens, they did receive an RFP from the board some time back, asking them to bid on these plants for the sunken garden. They did not do so because they didn't feel they could compete with the company that actually provided the material, which is called Hortec out of Grand Rapids. Their brand is "grown earth-friendly." So we now have a new nursery stock, some different varieties, some different altogether plants. We have plant material that is more suited towards sun than shade, which the original garden was shade, so we no longer have the serene secluded shaded space of the original garden. The new space is out in the elements, open to the sun and the wind and the rain and has no shade whatsoever. So question is, why? Why the change?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Good evening, my name is Brian Lefleur. I serve as the co-chair for the financial health team. My co-chair, Ben Bach, couldn't not be here. We send a letter to each of you late this afternoon and really appreciate your time and reviewing it as you review the budget process. But the cause of our letter to you and also to the mayor was essentially dealing with the city's unfunded accrued liability. And in this letter, we're stating some essentially facts that had been presented to the city under the Siegel reports for both pension and also OPEB. Essentially that a greater and greater share of the city's total available revenues are essentially being used to fund these outstanding obligations. And our concern as the FHT is that an increasingly large percentage of annual revenues will be required to satisfy pension and healthcare liabilities, essentially crowding out the other services that are essentially needed for the residents and the businesses of the city. So with that, one of our key recommendations at this time is to have the mayor and the city council focus on these attentions year around—the pension issue year round, not just during the annual budget cycle. And therefore, we would be recommending that the city creates a new full-time position to formulate a long-term financial strategy for the city. A chief restructuring officer, a chief strategy officer, or a chief legacy officer, whatever you want to call it, that has been successfully implemented across the United States to essentially help municipality, school districts to utilize best practices. In addition to that, we would want—this position would seek to identify efficiencies, cost-saving strategies with particular focus on addressing the city's growing unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities. So with that, I know you just received the letter this afternoon. Anyone on the FHT, myself, Ben Bach, and anybody else would be more than happy to meet with you further, provide additional details. But I apologize for getting this out to you such at late notice this afternoon, but certainly in time for this year's budget presentation. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And for council members, there is a copy of that letter on the dais for each one of you. There's also a copy of the letter from the chamber that was sent to us as well, so you'll have those to review and the ability to ask questions on it. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move into our budget presentations and the first budget presentation is the city clerk. Chris.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
All right, they've got you.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I think they're ready for me.
Yep.
Okay. So thank you, President Wood and council members, for this opportunity to go over my fiscal year 2020 budget for the Lansing City Clerk's office. The primary functions of the clerk's office are to oversee the orderly conduct of all elections, maintain city records, and of course, city council items dealing with the agenda and print proceedings. We process numerous business licenses, peddlers, transient merchants, and highlighting some of—the a couple of the newer ones, the Docless Electric Scooter Company license, as well as the medical marijuana facilities licensing. My office—I also serve as the recording secretary for the Board of Ethics and we are a U.S. passport acceptance facility. This year, in terms of elections, we had some major changes with Proposal 3 that was enacted last year. No reason absentee voting, meaning that any voter can vote from home or early in our office.
I hate to stop you, but apparently we're not up with your slides, so Faith, are we on board with those slides? Jason? Okay. They might be being seen in the public, you know, okay, we're up. Good, all right. No reason.
So with elections, some of the major changes, now constitutional right to absentee voting, as a matter of fact. It's written right in the Constitution that we have to have absentee ballots available for all voters 40 days prior to every election and 45 days for military and overseas voters. We also now have—voter registration closes at 15 days before the election for most methods, but in-person registration is allowed during the last 14 days up to and including Election Day. And voters can come in in person to the clerk's office and register to vote and even get an absentee ballot that day, vote it and/or take it with them.
Chris, if I could have you stop for just a second, Vice President Spatafor.
I was going to let you finish, but did anyone take advantage of that this election?
We did have eight people, even in this small turnout election, who took advantage of it. Seven out of the eight voted an absentee ballot on Election Day in the clerk's office and one of them chose to go back to their new home precinct to vote.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We also—and the Secretary of State is implementing this, automatic voter registration at Secretary of State locations. That occurs with any Michigan ID or driver's license transaction. I think they are still wrestling with exactly what that means, but it clearly does mean that voters—or people who get a driver's license or Michigan ID have to opt out if they do not want to be registered, if they are eligible, meaning they're 18 or—and a U.S. citizen. We also have the audit of election results. As I made the council aware, we participated with the risk-limiting audit, which is a scientific method of auditing election results for the 2018 election. And we will be, again, piloting that for the recent election that we had, so we'll be working with the Bureau of Elections to perform that audit. If anyone is interested, we will be having that on June 10th or 11th, whichever day is a Monday, at 2,500 South Washington. So it'll be a good opportunity to see how that works. June 10th, thank you. And we will—that will be open to the public, so anyone is welcome to come to that. So again, you know, 40 days prior to an election, voters can drop in on us, get an absentee ballot for any or no reason. And then registration at the clerk's office starts the 14 days before. And I do want to take a moment to mention that both with the licensing as well as with the elections, we are heavy—heavily using the South Washington office complex at 2,500 South Washington. Since we moved in there about eight to 10 years ago, that's been very popular with the voters, both for getting absentee ballots, dropping off their absentee ballots. We have a 24-hour drop box both at City Hall and there, and the one at South Washington is very heavily used. And in addition, we have all of our election tabulators and equipment there. We train all of our election workers there, so very, very necessary space. Proposal 3, some of the impacts on voters. It's next—oh, there we go. You see our newest—one of our newest Lansing residents took advantage of voting absentee in person. It has increased convenience for voters, but with that, it will likely lead to an increased postage cost for us, for postage and printing, and for some equipment that I will get to. In the long run, I think we'll be able to reduce the number of election workers in polling places, so the long-term will be some savings, but until we know exactly what we're dealing with, we kind of have to be prepared for everything. So again, SWAC is open to the public for 40 days before the election. We had been opening about 30 days before, so that's—so we'll be open 10 days earlier consistently and evening and weekend hours. Just a few notes, we are leading in protecting voters' rights. We have been piloting—we piloted new electronic poll book software. The state went to an all-new system for the qualified voter file about a year ago, but they just implemented the portion that deals with the computers that check in voters on Election Day. Also, as I mentioned, we're piloting the election results auditing. I serve on the forms committee for the Bureau of Elections so that I can help make forms and things more efficient and more understandable for folks who have to fill them out, including the—my crowning accomplishment, I felt like, was the voter registration form that got implemented a couple of years ago. We used to have about a 30 percent rate of people leaving things off because of the way things were placed on the form, and we finally got that updated, so we're having people actually fill it out correctly and we're able to more easily process those. I'm on Secretary of State Benson's Election Modernization Advisory Committee and I frequently am representing the Clerk Association by testifying in front of the legislature to improve the voting process and protect voters' rights. Okay, on to medical marijuana. Again, and I've said this many times, my goal is for this to be fair and efficient process that protects the public health, safety, and welfare for the residents while using the criteria in the ordinance. It has been a very large and complex challenge since the ordinance was approved and between the coordination between our ordinance and state law, it's become very complicated. I think I and/or the city have been sued about 15 times. We do have information publicly available at lancemi.gov/marijuana about where we are in the process. We have to coordinate with numerous other departments. We've had 188 applications. Many of those are grows. Grow facilities can have multiple locations in one—or multiple licenses in one location. The state limits the largest ones to 1,500 plants per license, so some of these growers are doing eight and 10 licenses in a single location.
Before you go on, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, we've read in the newspaper in various places that the application fee is a money grab and that, you know, you guys are taking in more dollars than you need for the applications. Are you going to talk—can you touch on that just a little bit?
Sure.
Because I have to believe that's not accurate, so.
Yeah, I don't believe that's true. My office alone could track up and through a couple of months ago, over 8,000 hours of staff time. And we know that the police department, fire—we're meeting with the law department, one to two attorneys every week about this ordinance, so multiple departments, and we are working on—doing a better job of tracking those expenses. But, you know, I believe that it's break-even at best in terms of the licensing fees. And, you know, there's a lot that goes into, especially the provisioning centers with the limited number that we have to do such a deep dive review. And then when we do deny, one, the appeals rights and all the things that we go through. So, you know, I definitely think it's—it is a large revenue pot, but it is also a large expense.
So in follow-up, even with the—so when a application is denied, theoretically, they get back a portion of their money, but with all the appeals and all the other stuff—
They are the most expensive ones for us to process.
Exactly, okay. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. This is just a follow-up from what you said. And when you say 8,000 hours of staff for your office, are you talking about from the fiscal year 2019?
No, that goes back to December of 2017 through—I think we calculated—I think it was about six weeks ago when we did that, so.
And then added about another 500 hours.
Oh, you did add, okay. So that's—okay. So that's—so that's December of 17th through current.
Thank you.
The city attorney would like to be recognized.
Just to support what the clerk is saying, and we have a study that is ongoing right now. We're calculating from the inception date of the ordinance through the current date, the number of hours and other expenses incurred by the city in the licensing process. So that was commenced a couple of weeks ago and we'll be going through every department calculating the hours.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, President Wood. So in terms of the provisioning center license process, we have given 19 conditional approvals. We have three whose scores are being finalized, three applicants whose scores are being finalized through the appeals process. One of those will be heard on May 17th, the other on May 28th. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, May 28th, we will know who the first 20 are. And we also are looking—we believe that will be the date that we open the 30-day application period for phase two. We're working with the IT department to make that electronic submission, so it will place some burdens on the applicants to upload some files into correct places and we'll try and avoid some of the inches—several inches thick binders that we received with phase one.
Chris, can—were you going to outline with the other five types of licenses, how many?
I can—do we have that graph here? Okay, yeah, I can—Brian will bring up the graph, but we do have processors, secure transport, grower, and safety compliance, which is testing. The secure transporter simply moves the product from one location to another. They have—you have to be licensed to be able to do that. And processors, I can say that they're the ones that—we want to make sure and look the closest at because some of the items that they use in terms of processing are flammable and things, so the fire department, that's the one that they are keeping the closest eye on. We have had 74 applicants for grow facilities, 22 for processors, 85 for provisioning centers, only one safety compliance application, and six secure transporters. And then of those, we have approved 51 grow—18—I'm sorry, we've approved 54 grows. We have 18 processors approved, 19 provisioning centers. The safety compliance facility is approved and we have five out of the six transporters have received full approval, full license or conditional approval.
Thank you.
All right, so next slide. Some of the specific changes that are in my budget. An additional $35,000 in miscellaneous operating for largely postage and things related to election administration and—as well as licensing costs. We do have an additional capital request for $35,000. And I'm not sure how many of you might have stayed up that night, but in the November 2018 election, our absent voter counting board finished processing at, oh, 4:00 in the morning. And with no reason absentee voting, we are looking to potentially double the number of people who vote by absentee ballots, so we are looking at some technological solutions to that so that we can finish at a reasonable hour. And then 12,500 to replace Election Day laptops. The first round of those were grant from the state. We aren't eligible to get replacement computers from the state, so it's our responsibility to keep replacing those as we phase out older ones. And as you can imagine, with 45 precincts, we have found a need in some of the higher turnout precincts to have two laptops that run in tandem, so—and then in some locations, we have greeter laptops, so we're putting out about 65 to 70 laptops in every election. So keeping those up-to-date, running, and in good working order is important, so we need—we do need to have a constant rotation of putting in new election computers.
We have a question from Vice President Spatafor.
Mr. Clark, maybe this is better directed at Angie, but—so we spent a lot of time in other hearings talking about the IT line item, and I know you're assessed that line item. Why aren't those computers covered by IT?
They're not connected to the network. They're very—they're used very differently. They're deployed essentially, most of them, three times a year.
So you're not assessed on those, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we do—you know, because they're not logged into the network, they have to be offline on Election Day. They're handled a little bit differently than the rest of the computers in the system.
Thank you.
And then 2020 is the presidential year, although we will only have—we will have the presidential primary, which is a reimbursable election, so that is another change that is in—that is in our budget, that we do have budgeted for that. And we were surprised by the turnout in 2016. In 2020, you know, not trying to be partisan, but we are a very Democratic-leaning city and we have about 20 Democratic candidates, so I think we're going to have a really high turnout in that election. So we are doing everything to be prepared for 2020. The presidential primary, where if you recall, voters have to select which party ballot they get and then they vote that ballot. One wrinkle that happened to more Republican communities in 2016 was—
Sorry, sorry, just a second. In the studio, we're again offline. The slides are not up and nor are we. If you could please check that. Thank you. And we're on the slide that says FY 2020 budget changes. Thank you.
And again, you know, just some more detail about some of the things that might happen with the presidential primary. With 20 candidates, our election is March 10th. And when other states have their presidential primaries and then some of the losing candidates might drop out and we may have voters have the right to spoil their ballot even if they've returned their absent voter ballot, so we're going to have voters contacting us to get a new ballot because the candidate that they voted for is no longer a candidate. So it'll be a challenging election. And that's—on to the last slide, that's all I have, other than if you have any questions.
Okay, are there additional questions? We're offline again. Please get back up, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the clerk at this time? Councilmember Hussein.
Just real quick, and it's a small item, when you look at the miscellaneous operating budget, this calls for, I think what's reflected in here is a $30,000 increase, and I think your presentation said 35, am I missing something?
Yeah, I think you're right, I think we, I think I misspoke in the slide.
Okay, and then utilities, in terms of year-end projection, are way down, what's that due to?
I don't make the utilities projections, those are handled by finance.
Okay.
Is that something, Nancy, that you could address? The year-end...
You can take a look right now.
Okay, if you could look into that and get back with us. Are there other questions for the clerk? Just a couple of questions I have for you, you had mentioned the, replacing some of the computers. How do you dispose of the computers, or are those given back to the state that you no longer use, and especially with the data that is in those computers?
Those are disposed of through our IT department, the state does not want them back, even the ones they gave us, they just want to know that they are obsolete. But the data that has any voter information is removed about seven days after the election, so they are stored and kept without voter data on it, without anything that could compromise the voter's security. We realize we do have a lot of information on them during the election, so, just so you know, prior to loading that data, the Wi-Fi is turned off, so they are never connected while the voter data is on it, and then we take the voter data off before we turn the Wi-Fi back on to allow the computer to get Windows and antivirus updates.
Okay. Yes, Angie?
The utility, back to the utility question, about $30,000 is what has been used in the prior year, is budgeted this year, and is proposed for the next year. It looks like the year-end projection for this current year, which it doesn't affect the budget, is, was, it looks like that may, that was understated, most likely, so.
Okay, we understand that it was budgeted at 30, we understand that it's budgeted close to that again, but what you're showing for year-end is 12,000, almost 13,000, why?
Yeah, if you look at the fiscal year 18 year-end project, or year-end actuals, that was about 31,000.
That may have been a, when we submitted our budget, we may have missed that line.
Again, the top of this says FY 2019 year-end projections. So it's not where we are currently, it's the year-end, so why does that not say 30,000?
That is correct, I don't have an answer for that, it looks like there was probably something missed in, I'm assuming maybe it was the year-to-date amount that was in at the time, and that there wasn't a supplemental amount added for the year-end projection, that's my guess, yep.
Thank you. The last question that I have for you, Chris, has to do with, you had indicated in some releases that you had made some changes to, for the last five licenses, could you go over those, we've not had a briefing on that?
Sure, and we do have a lot of that is available publicly, but some of the main things, some of the criteria, as we went through the process, it was, it was difficult, some things were difficult to score, difficult to assess, so we tried to make it more clear what was the basis of the score. But the main thing, the main things that I got feedback from council members and members of the public about the distance between provisioning centers, avoiding clustering, and keeping them further away from residential property, as well as investments in the city, both in hiring and construction. So those are the, some of the things where we emphasized and shifted some of the points, so that we're more focusing on city investments and distance between provisioning centers.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President, so, just to be clear, the criteria still is the same, so explain to me, are you, you're, when you say you're shifting some of the focus, can you go into a little bit more?
So there's, there's hard criteria, such as the distance between a provisioning center and substance abuse facility, and then there's scored criteria. So we raised the, when we had, when we were starting from zero, we had no other provisioning centers that, provisioning center could have, you couldn't measure the distance from anybody, because there was nobody there. So now we have points that will be assigned based on how many provisioning centers are within a certain distance of the applicant, how many of the first 20 are within a certain distance of the first, of the applicants, and...
Go ahead. Have you started accepting those applications for the five, or how does that work?
We have not, I, tentatively, will be opening that date, the 28th of May, and accepting them through the 27th of June.
Okay.
We're finalizing our IT process in terms of the electronic submission.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we will see you later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to ask our union leadership to come forward. We have Lynn with the Teamsters 243, we have Ryan Wilcox and Tom Krug with the Police Department, we have Dan with the Firefighters, and Dennis Parker with UAW. And there are seats up here, and whoever gets the first two seats at the table gets to go first, so don't, don't fight over those first two seats. Okay, over the years, we have invited the, our union leadership down to our budget process to talk about the budget. We have asked them to review the departments that they represent, this is their opportunity to talk about the things that they believe are supportive of the work that they, the representatives, the men and women that they represent. We've also asked them for things that they believe need to be changed, or suggestions that they might have. This is not an opportunity for us to go back and forth with the, our union leadership and the administration. We are here to listen to the responses from the union leadership on this. We also do realize that we have some of the unions that are represented here that are in contract negotiations, and we're not here to negotiate their contracts. What we're here to talk about is the proposed budget, and how it affects the work, the working men and women of the city. So with that, it appears that Tom, from the Police Department, is going to, business manager for the Police Department's going to start off, and we have Dan from the Firefighters. Just make sure the green light is on, and then you might be interrupted during your presentation with questions, so with that, welcome, Tom.
Thank you, as Carol said, we recognize that all of the sworn officers of the Police Department...
Is the green light on, Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
From patrol up to the range of the Capitol. The real question, I guess, for the City Council is, do you want a reactive police department that reacts to crime, responds to crime, or a proactive police department that is attentive to...
I think they're going to want you to bring that a little bit, a little bit closer to you, just pull it up a little bit closer, sir.
Oh, I guess the green light wasn't on.
All right, thank you.
Anyway, the question is, is do you want a reactive police department, or a proactive? And reactive, I mean, is just responding to calls for service, and proactive would be out attempting to, to stop crime ahead of time. I mean, we have units that work on that, and they work hard and diligent every day. I think statistics will show you that traffic citations are down, arrests are down for driving offenses like drunk driving, because our officers just don't have the time to be in the neighborhoods, on the streets, not responding to a call. I had a short meeting last week in City Hall, it was a nice sunny day, the one day we had sun last week. And our division president was with me, who was, represents the non-supervisors. I just said in passing, "How are things going today?", he says, "We're really busy, hopefully this meeting doesn't go very long, I've got, we've got 12 calls waiting." So what that meant to me was, you had 12 calls waiting on a Tuesday afternoon at 1:30 in the afternoon. Those calls range of all types of calls, of course, as you know, they're prioritized by the more severe or violent down, but he also said, "It's pretty sad sometimes when just a call for service, someone's garage got broke into, or whatever it might be, that there's a three-hour delay." And that's a long time for a citizen who may have never called the police before, and have paid taxes for years, and that is a big deal to them. And to wait three hours for the police to show up, I don't think is the service that you want to give your citizens. We need more staffing at the Lansing Police Department, I know that there's a couple of positions in the proposed budget. Our community policing officers are important to the citizens, and especially the neighborhoods that they're in, they are pulled every day from those areas. Some days, they're not in their areas at all. And there has been times recently, in the last couple of months or few weeks, that you've had eight officers available to handle all calls in the city of Lansing. To me, that's not acceptable.
Could you give us that number again?
Eight.
Eight.
So you have eight officers, and keep in mind, if you have one serious crime occur, those eight officers could all be pulled there for that, for a reason. And again, the numbers are just not there. Mutual aid, mutual aid, I was a police officer for a while, 25 years, and mutual aid used to be a thing that only used in rare circumstances, because Lansing would handle their stuff, East Lansing would handle their stuff, but now, in today's world, mutual aid is used by the city of Lansing, in other words, other departments, the sheriff, East Lansing, MSU, State Police, coming into the city way more than they ever have in the past, and that's not really what mutual aid was meant to be. It was meant to be for the big things, the, the out-of-the-ordinary situations. I understand you only have a certain amount of money. You know, I look through the budget, and it's not my job to tell you where to cut money from here and there, but there are a lot of social programs built into the budget, and I haven't a problem with any of them as I look through them, some of them I am familiar with, but in these type of budgets, you have to go back to your priorities. What is the basic priority that you, that you need to do? One that I thought was pretty funny was the Wi-Fi in the parks, $50,000, that's not a big deal, well, a couple of $50,000 items is a police officer, so to me, it is a big deal, and do you really need Wi-Fi in the parks? I mean, can you go to the park for an hour and not have Wi-Fi? I think police and fire, and fire's here next to me, are one of the two top priorities in the city, and I know roads are, and I under, and I understand that. We just need to look at the positions that we have, I think there's money in the budget. The chief and the Police Department has done a great job in trying to attract new officers, we're going through a time right now where officers are retiring, and that's going to continue for two or three more years before it levels out again, but as I think I saw in the Lansing State Journal today, and of course, I knew it, you have a very young Police Department, you have officers out on the streets with, you know, three, four, five years seniority. The interesting thing is, the officers are being brought on, I had a conversation this week, that three or four of the new people that have just started are leaving. And so the question is, why are they leaving? They leave for various reasons. One is the pay and benefits, we're not here to negotiate a contract, one is, they want to go back to their home area, usually within the state, and I think another is that they see the workload and the stress that are put on the other officers, and they look at, maybe this is a time for me to look elsewhere, because workload's a big thing, you need the downtime, and I would encourage you to look through the budget, and see if there's ways to get more officers on the street, and get them back into your community policing areas. And Ryan Wilcox is with me, and I'll get away from the microphone, he is a sergeant at the, I'll answer your question first, he's, he's a sergeant with the Lansing Police Department, currently assigned to your investigative division, but I'll answer some questions, and give Ryan a moment, if I could.
Yes, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President, and I asked the chief the same question, he was very gracious in giving, in qualifying his, his, his response, and I do appreciate that, but, you know, I'm, I'm always curious, you know, what is the number? So what is, what, in your mind, to have a fully-staffed, fully-responsive Police Department, what number do you think the number of police officers that we should have, that we should have on staff?
I don't have a particular number, but if I was to give you how many I would like right now, probably 20?
Twenty more.
Twenty more. And that's, and that's filling the vacancies that you have, that you're still trying to fill.
Councilmember Garza, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate you being here tonight, and that was actually one of my questions I was going to ask, so, when we talk about proactive and reactive, how long do you anticipate the state police being on loan here?
That is not a question for me, I know that they've been working here for the last two or three years, Ryan will probably give you a little bit more insight into that, but I know that they're in the city a lot, and I think they do a good job, and they help supplement, but they're not meant to be Lansing Police Officers.
No, and I, and I agree, and that's, that's part of my problem, when you say, you know, proactive and reactive, I mean, 20 police officers, and then five to eight more state troopers, if they leave, I mean, that's just going to put us in that more of...
If the state police left, then my number would have to go up, I'm basing on how we're doing things now.
I apologize, my question is without state police, because we can't guarantee, because the state budget is a state budget as well, so we can't guarantee that they're going to be here from year to year, so my question, you know, so, it's 20, taking into account those folks...
I'm not looking at the numbers of the state police that you have in the city, I'm looking at the number of sworn officers that I think would be a benefit to the city of Lansing, is Lansing Police Officers, and I agree with you, the state could have budget problems and move them to Bay City, or Flynn, or wherever else they may want to, or put them back on highways, or whatever else they may want to do.
Before Councilmember Garza continues, Ryan, if you could pull your chair over there next to Tom, that way, if you would like to chime, chime in, okay, all right, thank you, Dan. All right, thank you. Councilmember Garza.
And that was just my concern, I just wanted to be transparent, I want people to realize, you know, the issues that we are having, and that if, if they were to pull out, you know, how detrimental that would be to the city of Lansing, so...
So there are, I believe, nine state police that are in the city right now, there's three that are in our detective bureau, they are sergeant and two troopers, but they are actively all working cases, in assigned cases on a regular basis, just like any one of our other detectives were. So if all three of those are removed, that's technically three investigators that we've lost, right there, out of just the investigations, then I believe that there are six inside of our Violent Crime Initiative team, and they actively participate and add to what we currently have in there. So that would be, on top of the three we have, that'd be nine, that we're, we'd be, we'd be without, that we depend on, that act as quasi-police officers in our jurisdiction, they're assigned to us, they concentrate just on the city of Lansing with us, so, I mean, you know, Tom has said before, and I don't want to go back on a lot of what he said, but, you know, if we lose that, that... he said, but, you know, if we lose that, that would be, that'd be a pretty big loss just right off the top. So even if we could start, and I, and I understand, everybody wants more and more, but if we could just start with just something to have in place for when those are removed, I think we're a little bit ahead of where we could be. But obviously, if we can build on that, I'm not going to say no.
Ryan, when, you're going to need to pull that mic just a little bit closer to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you. Councilmember Garza, were you done?
Yeah, I think, I'm all set. I just appreciate what you do out there. We don't want you guys getting burned out. We want you to be safe. And I think everybody here on council would like to see more police officers added to the force.
Thank you, and thank you guys for your time.
Councilmember Hussein, Vice President Spatafor, and then Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I really appreciate you two being here, truly. When you talk about a livable city and you talk about hierarchy and needs, public safety is obviously right there at the top. And so we appreciate everything you guys do. When we had the conversation, I do think Chief Yankowski, he, you know, he fired back with some questions, what type of community do you want? And you actually started your presentation in that manner. We talked about some science, some studies, things of that nature. Cities are size, grappling with similar issues that we're grappling with. And the number was 2.4 per 1,000 residents. Right now, we have about 1.7. So really, the number, I think, is more like 270 something. When you, and so, and, and we know, we talk to the frontline officers all the time, we talk to our CPOs, we talk to those folks on patrol. I was just doing a walking Wednesday with our, with Captain Green. And, and obviously, we, we interface with Chief Yankowski as well. Everybody is, is feeling the strain of this low number of 202. You can talk to the Ingle County dispatchers and they will tell you, you all do not have enough help. And I, and just so people truly understand, when you talk about eight patrol officers from the entire city split up into four sectors, at one point, at peak, I think, we have about 16. At one point, and I know this because I've talked to a few different lieutenants, in better times, we had at peak 32 officers patrolling the city of Lansing. So when, when we talk about being down, we are way, way down, and that's scary. My question to you is, we're adding, well, I should say it's recommended that we add one CPO position, so we would be funded for 203. How many, how many officers do we actually need to add to our budget to have a full-time, 24/7 presence across a seven-day week? Because obviously, when you add one, you're talking 40 hours a week. But that individual also has vacation time, that individual has leave time, that individual, and it goes on and on. How many do you actually have to add to just have one additional body on the streets, all three platoons throughout the week? Do we know?
Well, we've got three shifts, vacations and everything to make an effect. I would say probably four or five, just to add that extra officer. And I'm not into the whole numbers game by any means when it comes to figuring the scheduling, but, you know, I mean, that'd be a rough guess.
That might be a question for our internal auditor. I did talk to one of our past internal auditors. He was actually at one of our meetings this past weekend. He said he thinks that number's about six. So one officer is not really one officer. I guess that's the point I'm making.
No, thanks.
Okay, we have Vice President Spatafor, Councilmember Jackson, and Councilmember Washington.
Gentlemen, thanks for being here tonight. I just, I need, I'm having a hard time understanding, just real quick. So when Councilmember Spitzley asked the numbers that you think would be a full complement, you said about 20. Do you know how many, you said that includes the vacancies. Do you mean on top of vacancies or inclusive of?
It would include the vacancies that they're currently trying to fill.
And how, do you know how, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know the answer to that. That would be for the chief, or I'm sure it's available. The other thing about police work is that you just don't hire somebody and then tomorrow they're out on the street. It takes months and months and months, even after they, of course, graduate from the police academy. You've got about at least a six-month training period before they're on their own. So when you lose them, there's a huge lag and then, and then turnaround period. I know the chief has been trying to front-load. When you front-load two or three and two or three leave, then we're back to zero or less. And so it's, it's this continuing, continuing problem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Washington.
Thank you. I have two questions or two areas. First, thank you for being here and the work that you all do. As far as maybe lieutenant, detective, I'm sorry?
Sergeant.
Sergeant. I guess the overtime situation, when it comes to going to court for city ordinances or state misdemeanors or felonies, but especially city ordinances, because that's within our control. From my recollection and observation, you all get called in very often.
Yep.
Your day off and everything. You get the automatic two hours and you hope that it's one of those incidents where it gets settled or something, or no one shows up and you're out within five minutes, which happens a lot. Do you know or can suggest any way that'll kind of make it more efficient, where you might not have to come in, but still are able to, I don't know, be on call or respond or any suggestions in that area?
We've tried a couple of different things and nothing's really seemed to completely solve the problem. And a lot of it is just because you don't know what the defendant's going to do. And to call somebody in, depending on where people are, it could be a half hour to an hour and a half for him to get in. So I guess the only sure way to really do it is unfortunately to have them come in. I just, I don't know. I, a lot of stuff has went more maybe with the video, with the Polycom doing it out of the county, and now some of our juvenile cases have started. That might help, but, you know, where do they go to to get on one? And is that something that would work? I don't know.
I guess I'll just, you know, recommend or suggest to just try to look at those wherever possible, because if you look at our police overtime line item and expenses, it's astronomical. And that goes right to your probably quality of life as well, if you have to wake up and come in on certain days.
Does it, does it break it down, whether it's for court overtime or staffing overtime at all that you guys got? Because I'd, I'd be willing to make a statement that it's more staffing overtime than anything else. We, well, not as recent, but we have went for an extended amount of time where we have had to supplement our road staffing, because we can't reach our numbers due to the new hires, the retirements, whatever it is. So we have supplemented our staffing with overtime to pay someone to come in and work a 10-hour shift. So I, I venture to say that's probably where a good majority of that is coming from.
Thank you. And then my other area goes, I guess, for Tom and the union reps. This is, it's a hard question and probably a hard answer, but as someone who's just, just received, you know, a recommendation from the financial health team and just knowing the source of, you know, these unfunded pension liabilities, just being mostly police and fire due to the fact that there was so many staff in the past, I guess, and with negotiations coming up this year and all these recommendations, I guess, what's the role, your role, moving forward, if any, with some of these recommendations or, you know, these possibilities?
And again, I must caution that we are, I, I have a labor relations attorney sitting out there going to give me the evil eye that we have to be very careful that we're not talking about negotiations of contracts. So, thank you.
In general, and we're not here to negotiate our contract. I totally understand that. I think you have to go back in the history of the Lansing Police Department. In the last two contracts at least that I've been very actively involved in, we have given to the city changes in not only pension for active employees, but changes in healthcare, retiree healthcare. So it's not that we have held up this iron curtain and said, we're never going to give you anything. We have. You could lay off the whole Lansing Police Department, it's not going to solve your unfunded liability. You can't do it on the backs of your employees. I understand that there's a huge liability out there. And we represent a lot of other communities. And some of the communities I represent, you know, they went with millages. They did different things to, to try to, to take care of that problem. I'm not saying that's the route that you go, but for probably 20, 30, 40 years, nobody's putting money in the bank. And now the, now the, it's due. And you just can't make that money up. But we have given, I know fire and all the employees have given. So again, we have not just stood back and said, you're not going to, to do anything. And we have a member on the financial health team and we are looking at all the recommendations. I saw the email this afternoon, but I haven't even had a chance to open it on my phone. So, but we're aware of it and, you know, we have been, I think, very reactive in giving changes. And I think also, the more changes you give, the more people look, they're going to go elsewhere. I mean, that's just a fact of life. People have to make the best decision for them and their families.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you Sergeant and Tom. I just have a couple of questions. It's my understanding that we've actually gone through our overtime in the first six months in the last two budget cycles. That's problematic if, if we're running out of our overtime that quickly, which is the reason why we can't keep CPOs in their area. And in some of my areas, CPOs are critical. They have made a huge difference in the crime rate in those neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the crime rates are going up because we don't have that same relationship. And what I noticed in your budget, year after year, in the last few years, is an awful lot of really cool technology. And, and I like technology just as much as the next person. However, we've got hot, what's it called? Hotspot crime fighting, we've got real-time crime, we've got, I mean, I could go on and on and on. And computers are nice, but computers are computers, data is data, and it's only as good as what you put in there. In your opinion, which is more important? All of this really cool technology or boots on the street?
It's a tough one. Because unfortunately, what we deal with is more technology than anything else now. I mean, everyone lives on their phone, they function on their phone. And boots on the street gets you to a point where you get access to that. But then you've got to break it down, you've got to analyze it, and you've got to put that into something. So that's really hard to say, because they're both very important. And don't get me wrong, when it comes to the crimes in progress, you know, the robberies, the B and Es, the stolen vehicles, the assaults, being on the street is that front line of defense that you need and you have to have. But for the follow-through, to get it to the point where it goes to court and to do the other side of it, that technology is also very critical also. So it's, it's hard. And without some of that technology, the caseload and the amount of stuff that we deal with and we function through with, you know, our detective bureau, it would increase and it would take more time and build up more of a caseload. And then things get lost and they get forgotten about. So I don't, I don't think I can...
You need both.
...answer, unfortunately. I'm sorry.
And you know what?
That's fine.
And that's fine. That's what I'm looking for and I understand that. But I will piggyback on what you said. People are really getting angry when they're calling in a call and they're told to put it on the internet, put it, just make a report online. They're angry. You know, because it's like you said, they may have never called the police before, they feel they're paying taxes.
There's no doubt.
You know, my husband got hit by a woman and the guy said, sorry, can't give you a ticket, our computers are down. So kind of just got stuck with it. I mean, there are, there are issues out there. So I, I'm actually really glad to hear that you don't have a definitive answer, and that's fine. Thank you.
Are there other questions? I have a couple of questions. First of all, Sergeant, what is your caseload? You're a detective. How many cases are you actively handling?
So as a detective sergeant, we don't actively, we assist with cases, but we don't actually carry ourselves a caseload.
All right, so...
The case, the caseload for one of our major detectives, so someone that would work a homicide or an armed robbery, it can range anywhere from five cases to 15 cases. It just depends on how things work. But that would be drastically increased though, too, if we lost our three MSP detectives that are in there. I mean, their five to 15 cases would then get spread out amongst, I believe we have five major crimes detectives. So that, that workload is just going to trickle down. And I know, I can't remember, I'm sorry, which one you brought up, our community policing officers and how much they've had an effect with our, our crime rates. But our Violent Crime Initiative has had a huge, huge impact on dropping our crime rates. And again, the state police are part of that. So if you, those are two really big things. If we, we lose personnel, we are going to see a difference. And it is going to have an impact on both the clearance rates of our, of our cases, which we do very well with that, and our, our major crimes, and also stopping and alerting some of the, the crimes in our, our violent crime initiatives.
Okay. I know over the years that there has been work with the city attorney's office, working with cops and courts, to try to streamline some of the things that are happening so that it would prevent less overtime, as Councilmember Jackson talked about, coming into courts and, and things like that. Is that continuing?
There's, they continue to make changes all the time. We've now went to electronic. We can get our search warrants and that type of stuff done all electronically over email. So that saves us trips down, time, especially with us being all the way down on Wise Road right now, driving all the way downtown. Huge inconvenience, but they, they made it an electronic version. And it looks and appears it's going to go across the board with all judges in Lansing, so that, that'll be a huge time saver. We're, we're, we're doing more, but there's still more that could be done, but it's just getting both sides to talk and do things and cooperate, so...
So that sort of leads into another question, and that is, how often are you as a body or you as union representatives asked to give suggestions and different things that would help streamline or help with duplications or, or things like that in order to make the department mesh better?
I think we're talked to fairly regularly, but, you know, a lot of it comes from, unfortunately, the higher-ups that, you know, they just say certain things can't be done and it stops there.
Are there any other questions? All right, Tom and Ryan, we want to thank you, and we'll move Dan in...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
...for the fire department. We'll ask you to stick around just because if there's questions afterwards that someone comes up with.
Thank you for your time. I reflect a lot of sentiments of my brothers from the police department. It's the same thing for us. Do you want an ambulance in three minutes or do you want one in six minutes? That's what we're talking about right now. We need people. Our, I'll, I'll give you some statistics, although I'm really not a statistic guy, but in 2008, we had a daily staffing factor of 52 personnel a day. At that time, we had nine engines, four ladder trucks, four ambulances. Our run volume that year was 16,086 total calls. Last year, in 2018, our staffing has decreased to 41. That's six engines, two trucks, four or five ambulances in the last half of last year. Our run total was 22,000.
They're going to ask you to...
I'm sorry, slow down?
Yep. You're not going to a fire.
Everything's a rush, right?
Because I'm still on...
Okay, which numbers would you, would you want me to go back?
Let's start over.
Okay.
Slow down.
2008, we had, we had 52 people working a day. I won't go into the rigs because we've closed three stations since then. And we pulled 16,086 calls total. In 2018, last year, our staffing was 41, and we pulled 22,267 calls. Predominantly, most of those are ambulance calls, medical calls where people's lives hang in the balance and minutes matter. That's a 72% increase in 10 years of runs with a 22% reduction in, in personnel. That's the main thing. We need people to do our job. Do you want to wait for East Lansing, for the mutual aid that was never designed to take care of our citizens? It was designed to supplement our care. We need people. I believe that our administration had put in the budget for six people added to our overall staffing, two more a day. I've heard that that's been taken out. That was for a sixth ambulance. And we don't argue that we need these ambulances. But the problem is where they got the manpower for those, that fifth ambulance was off our ladder trucks. Our rigs are staffed with four personnel. There's a standard from the NFPA that's, that says we should have four people on a fire truck. We understand the need for the ambulances, but those ladder trucks are a RIT team. A RIT is a rapid intervention team. Those are the guys that stay outside. So when a firefighter goes down in a fire due to whatever could happen, they're the ones that come in and get us. They're the ones that allow us to hang ourselves out there a little farther to do our job.
Just a moment. Dan, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I understand what you just said about you had six additional people budgeted, but you don't, you, on your understanding...
I believe that was removed.
Okay. But I'm also understanding that you guys, you're going to have a significant number of people, and when I say significant, over five people retiring in the next couple of months as well.[1796.35] months as well.
Well, that's a possibility to, and I, we're not talking about negotiations, but depending on negotiations, a lot of things can happen. We could lose a lot of people.
So, you have, oh, right, I don't want to get into it, but you have the potential of having, um, a number of people retiring in the next couple of months.
Yes.
So, the question is, you know, it's, it's, what do you, what, what are, what exactly, when you say you need these people, are there firefighters, EMTs, paramedics? What exactly is the need?
Well, in our, in our, in our fire department, we all start as firefighters.
Okay.
You're an EMT or a paramedic at that time.
Yep.
Okay, you, you have to be a minimum EMT to be employed here on the fire department because we run the ambulances. Realistically, we work on a staffing factor of three. That's the minimum we can do. We have three shifts. That doesn't take into account vacations, it doesn't take into account any of the time off, sick leave, duty injury, non-duty injury, any of the time off that somebody could be off for. We maintain that minimum. At that minimum, at forty-one, you can do the math, what it takes. We have a hundred, ninety-six firemen when we're fully staffed, ninety-six firefighters on the fire department. We have thirty engineers and thirty-three captains and three battalion chiefs. We're at pretty much bare minimum for the positions on the rigs. And like I said before, we need our ladder trucks fully staffed because that's our safety net. That's what it's about. And again, mutual aid was never designed, never intended to be mutual automatic aid. Just wasn't. But it's become that because of the cuts. We know there were financial issues, as well as the rest of my colleagues over here have taken cuts over the last ten, twelve years. We have too, and we've made sacrifices along the way. But if you want to continue to protect the citizens of this city, it comes down to all of us sitting here. If the streets aren't good, we can't get there. It beats up our rigs. It affects the, the garage. We, we're all interconnected on this. Everybody's in the same boat. We all need more people. So, we have to decide if we're going to be a city that we provide our citizens the level they deserve or not. You know, as far as our budget goes, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't understand budgets very much. I know everything's gotten an increase. I know that there's a plan out there for rig replacement. We just need the tools to do our job and the people to do it. We're willing to do it. We're all willing to work. We just need your help to get there.
Are there any questions for Dan? Yes, uh, Councilmember Washington and Councilmember Garza.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. You know, as I listen to, um, Tom and yourself, and, you know, it's difficult for anybody to work when they're understaffed. The stress, the emotional strain, but most of us don't have jobs where our life could be on the line at any moment. That constant adrenaline on, adrenaline off, adrenaline on, which is very, very unhealthy. And then to have to do that in overtime also and have to wonder if you're going to have enough people to have your back. Uh, you know, you don't have to, find a way to say this gently, but how is the mental health of your crew? I, I'm concerned. I am really concerned.
I'll give you an example. When I started back in nineteen ninety-nine on an ambulance, in any ambulance in the city, you'd make twelve runs a day. That's roughly one every two hours, right? Our crews are making eighteen runs a day. There's nights where they don't get any rest. There's days when they eat lunch at five o'clock and eat dinner maybe at eleven. We're pushing to the limit.
Right.
We're at the limit. We can't keep adding ambulances without adding people to ride them.
And we do have an aging population, and we do have an opioid crisis, and we do have, and, you know, and-
It's busier and busier every year.
Yeah, and-
Every year, we add runs.
My husband put it in, in perspective for me one time because I had worked at a nursing home where people died all the time, and he's a retired police officer. And I said, "Oh, I don't want to hear it. Dead is dead." And he said, "Until you scrape somebody's brains off the highway, don't tell me dead is dead." So, I understand what you go through.
It's stressful for our, for our crews. It's, it's very tiring, the, you know, we're busy.
Yeah.
And that's okay, but we need help. That's where we're at right now. We're at a breaking point, I think. We're getting close, anyway.
Uh, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions. Well, first, I appreciate you being here. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to present this with us. Samantha, would, would that be a question to go to you? It's like if, if the six, uh, firefighters were on the budget, now they're not, is there a reason? Can you explain why that got pulled?
Yeah, I, in consulting with Angie, to our knowledge, there have not been staffing reductions in the last couple of years.
I, maybe the best way to answer that is, all departments end up giving the mayor a budget. And then based on that, we saw ours. Let's use ours as an example. We put in ours that we wanted to have a legislative analyst, and when the budget was presented to us, there was no budget analyst in there. It was taken away. So, there is the potential that the fire department might have added that in, but by the time the budget is presented and given, um, to us, there are different tweaks and things that are done to the budget at that time.
Okay. Alright, thank you. And, uh, my last question is, could you, uh, talk about your response time?
Um, right now, we're still, the, the, kind of a standard is three minutes. The last best data I had, which is not that great, um, we're not particularly set up to keep good records and good statistics on this right now, um, although there are programs out there that we probably should implement, we'll plug there, but, uh, we're still getting, making it happen. Our ambulances, if you look at just response times, I guarantee they're up because of the fact we're calling for mutual aid. They have to come from farther away. Uh, not only that, they're busy too. Everybody's busy. It's not just Lansing Fire Department that's gaining runs every year, it's everybody around us, including the private ambulance services. Everybody's busier. It's just, that's the way it works. So, they're doing less with, you know, or doing more with less. Everybody's trying to do that, and that's where we're ending up. We're just getting to the point where we are really getting close to not being able to handle it. And we want to do it. It's just the fact it's getting difficult.
Well, hats off to you. I appreciate everything you do and, uh, stay safe out there, guys.
I have, uh, Councilmember Spitzley, and then I saw Councilmember Hussein's hand.
Thank you, Madam President. And I forgot to ask you when you were up here earlier, but, you know, the opioid crisis has just, I, I, I read a fascinating book on the origin of the opioid crisis down in, in Kentucky and how it, how it started there, but, so when you talk about, you know, increased runs and, and the increased stress on, um, you know, our, our police and fire, um, you know, the, the additional costs as well, I mean, the Narcan is not cheap. It can't be cheap. So, you know, and, and all of those things, you know, that's an added stress, but it's just seeing those type of runs, how, I mean, how often do you do that, do you know, a day on an average?
Well, I, it, it kind of comes in streaks. I think you guys agree with me. It's, it's, we could make, one ambulance could make six, seven overdoses a day on a certain day. There may be shifts where you don't make any. It, it's almost like it comes in in waves and, you know, it just comes in on a Monday and the whole week you're busy, and then it goes away for a couple of days. There's, I mean, I'm sure that our administration keeps statistics on this, but it has increased our, our run volume, definitely. The cost of the medications, um, a lot of that isn't really a cost to us per se, um, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's definitely increased our run volume, for sure. I mean, you know, we used to do, I, when I first started, you might have had one, uh, every six months. And I don't know if people just report them more now or we had, I, I don't know, but it's definitely a lot busier, so.
What do you do for, you have repeat, for lack of a better word, you have repeat offenders. What's your policy on that?
Well, we're here to save lives, so we don't, we don't get to make those decisions. Those actually are, well, people like yourselves get to make those decisions. We, we, we don't look at anybody any different than anybody else. We're here to save lives, that's our job, that's what we do. We don't have the luxury to make those kind of judgments.
Okay, we have Councilmember, uh, Hussein.
Uh, Dan, also appreciate you being here. Um, we talk a lot about, you know, this, this ten-year period where we cut a lot of money from the general fund budget, about sixty million. And we talk about critical services and, and, uh, critical positions that were cut, and, but we also know that there was waste cut. And so, you know, this body has talked a lot over the last few years that as we, we begin to build back that general fund, uh, balance, that we, that we start adding back some of that, some of that absolute critical service and, uh, critical services rendered in, in critical positions, uh, that we lost during that time. Um, it's, it's my opinion personally, uh, that we are, uh, at least being asked to approve a few positions that are not critical in this budget. And so, when I hear that, uh, there may have been a request, and obviously we have to do our homework, but there may have been a request for six additional firefighters, uh, and then there was maybe no conversation, uh, about that, uh, and then it comes, obviously, to us without those six positions. That's a bit unsettling to me. Um, so we will, we will do some homework on that. I want to talk a little bit, you talked about your ladder trucks. Um, I want to talk a little bit about those. So, my understanding is you have two frontline, you have two in the reserve, I think you have about three that are twenty-plus years, uh, you know, of age. I think you bought one back in two thousand and seven, uh, from Mason that, that is in a little bit better condition. Uh, but my understanding is three of those really are in pretty rough shape. And if we were to have any type of, um, catastrophe, uh, we'd be in big trouble. Can you talk a little bit about your, your ladder trucks?
Uh, yeah, they, we, we're in rough shape. They're old. And that's, you know, I, I actually commend the garage for what they do with it. It's amazing what they can keep on the road. We, we've got one last year, a used one from Mason, which was very old, that went, ended up having some issues right out the gate. We've bought two used ladder trucks in, in the history that I've been here. They're a very important piece of equipment. Um, you know, yeah, we don't have the high tendency of these high-rise fires, but as you well know, we've had high-rise fires like, um, Two Hundred Friendship, where we used those ladder trucks, and it's the darn good thing we had them. Most of the standards say we're supposed to have three, four, and we're running with two, which I understand, we made cuts, we all had to. Everybody did. Um, but the status of our fleet is bad. Our new rigs are getting bad. New, I call it two thousand fourteen. The roads don't help. Um, these are heavy pieces of equipment, they're built to withstand a lot, but they're getting beat up every time we roll down the road. And just a point, you know, we got a millage for police firing roads that I believe is going to expire in two years. If, uh, the way I look at it, if the citizens see us out there, us not coming, and we got, you know, uh, East Lansing and all these other places coming in, are we going to get that money? Where are we going to recoup that money when it comes? I, I appreciate what the citizens, citizens have done for us. And my commitment is that we give back to the citizens, because at the end of the day, that's what it's about. It's about our citizens. And we, we came and took this job to protect the citizens of the city, and I'm really worried about our future because I feel like we're sometimes failing by not being there for them.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, and I appreciate the clarification. I think, I, I didn't mean to say that the used was purchased in two thousand and seven. I think the used is a two thousand and seven.
It is a two thousand and seven.
It is a two thousand and seven. Um, real quick, and I know, you know, part of this is negotiation and part of this is, uh, but I do want to ask the question regarding, uh, paramedics. And why when we onboard EMTs, uh, we have such a difficult time, uh, supporting them in the transition to paramedic? Um, it, I believe it deals with shift differential, I believe it deals with, um, training, I believe it deals with, uh, some of the added responsibility, uh, on the paramedic when you do the, uh, the EMS runs. Uh, but could you speak to that just a little bit? And, and could you maybe add to, and I don't know if you have this number, but what is the percentage of folks that we bring in, uh, as EMTs that actually transition onto that paramedic role?
Well, I don't know with that, I'll answer that first. I don't know what percentage is, but it's pretty low. In the past, I'm guessing now we're at about what we've done, this will be our third group, I believe, that we've sent through, class of three. So, in the last five years, it's been nine. Out of roughly, we'll just say, we're darn close to half, I think, now, fifty-fifty on EMTs, paramedics. So, that's not a very good average. The problem with it is, is it's expensive. It costs a lot just to send somebody to paramedic school. Plus, you're paying them their salary, you know, and their benefits, and they're not here working, so now, because we're so low on people, we're causing overtime. So, it's, it's a vicious cycle. Yeah, it's good, but is it the way to do it? I, I, you know, that, like I said, once again, that's, that's policy. We just need enough to do what we need to do. But, um, it's hard, and it's a lot of work. I mean, it's not easy, just go to class, you know? I can tell you that most people who get their paramedic license never let it go because they worked that hard to get it. I don't need mine anymore, and I keep it. And I plan on keeping it the rest of my life because we work hard to get those. It's not easy. It's, it's a difficult thing, the paramedic EMT, you know, how are we going to handle it? We, we have to have paramedics, we run an ALAT service. We have to have, at least half of our firefighters have to be paramedics. I'm not, you know, in the position for that answer. I'm, I'm here to represent our, all the men and women of our fire department, no matter what their rank or where they're at. And that's what we do.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Spitz-
I just have a quick follow-up on that. It, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you, you have people that are, that, you know, you, you have a hard time getting people to volunteer to do the dual thing.
To go up and get their-
Yeah, because, because of the time and everything.
Absolutely.
So, why do you, I mean, I don't want to answer, why do you think that is? Why do you think, is it because of the time? Is it because of the, the, not, there's not a difference in pay, or why do you think it is?
I think it's a combination, you know, for everybody, it's different. I think part of it is the commitment. These people are away from their families, you know, and believe it or not, we want to go to work. So, when we're not at work, we don't really like it, you know? So, these, these people that do this are really stepping out. They're giving up a lot of their life to get this. The pay is not that much different, which doesn't make it lucrative for you to go get it. Um, you know, is that the answer? I don't know. I don't, my personal things, it shouldn't be about the pay, but let's be honest, it is sometimes. Um, if it was more, yeah, maybe we'd get more people to do it. But honestly, that's not the time to do it. It's expensive to send somebody. We need to figure out a way to, to get people to be paramedics before they come here, to help them get there, to educate them, to get in the schools, to do whatever we got to do to get it, make it happen. You know, and, and so.
Alright, thank you. I don't see any other questions for you, Dan, so we're going to ask Lynn, um, and Dennis to come up. Start off with Lynn and then pick up with Dennis. And just for the public's sake, um, will, will you tell us the bargaining groups that you represent and some of the jobs and the things that they do in those bargaining groups?
Yes, my name is Lynn Mead. I'm with Teamsters Local Two Forty-Three. I represent the clerical, technical, professional bargaining unit, as well as the supervisory bargaining unit. We have members pretty much in every single department in the city. Um, we, we do everything in the city. Um, and, uh, so, so we're all, we're all interrelated because we've got, we've got members that, um, work very well with each other. It's a, it's a well-oiled machine here in the city.
Alright. Go ahead with your presentation.
Um, well, basically, we've been talking about, um, the unfunded liability. We've been addressing unfunded liability. I know that I've been representing people here, um, at the city since two thousand and seven, and we've been talking about it, um, at least since then. One of the problems that we've got in the city is all the vacancies. By having the amount of vacant positions in the city, the city has pretty much saved themselves, you know, over, you know, two-point, two-point, uh, one-point-three million dollars each year by not having those people in those positions. However, by not having people in those positions, the people are not putting in to their pension, and the city's not putting in to the pension. So you've got this large bucket of pension, and there's more people taking out of the bucket than putting into the bucket. So, you know, just in, so, in simple terms, we are, we're not keeping up with filling of that bucket. We've created our own problem. We have a, um, we've got a retiree healthcare VIBA that, um, a certain amount of money has been going in to make sure that we have, um, funds for the retiree healthcare. I don't think every group has that, but, but the Teamsters do. And I believe since ninety-nine, we've had that VIBA in place. And so far, I don't think we've ever touched the VIBA account. Thank, thank goodness, but I don't think we've ever dove into that. We need, we need to pre-fund a lot of those types of accounts so we don't run into this type of, of issue. We just haven't been filling positions and, and since, um, May of two thousand and fourteen, so we're now going on five years. Our, our employees that we represent here, um, new employees, they, they don't get retiree healthcare at all. So that takes those people out of the mix for that unfunded liability. The pension is a hybrid pension. So there's a defined contribution and a defined benefit. But if you still talk about all those positions that the city hasn't filled, that's also a pile of money that hasn't been going in to those accounts to, to make up for those losses. So, you know, here we're saving one-point, one-point-three million dollars every year by not having those people, um, doing the, doing the work. Everybody else is, is picking up the slack and making up for it. But no, no new money's going in.
Are there any questions for, um, Lynn, Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate you guys being here today. Now, could you, uh, could you speak on behalf of like the benefits by shoring up your unfunded liability by hiring workers? I know you, you talked about it, but I mean, could you elaborate a little bit more about the benefits?
Well, currently, any new employee going into those, they, they, they do not get retiree healthcare when they retire. So that takes care of that portion of it right there. Um, as far as the hybrid plan, um, the, the employees contribute five percent in the defined benefit. They put in three percent in the defined contribution. So eight percent of their salaries going into the pension. And then the city puts three percent into the defined benefit. So by not having people doing that, because we're not hiring anybody, you know, we've got retirees having their, their pension, and no new money's going into it at all.
And, and, and that's what I'm understanding, and I want, you know, other people to understand that as well. By hiring people, we can shore it up, reverse what's going on, slow down the process of, of, um, this unfunded liability. And, you know, going to our budget talks and, and being out in the public, all I'm hearing is police, fire, um, public services, roads. You know, that's, that's the critical, um, pieces that people want to see. And, you know, we appreciate, appreciate what you do, and we want to help you and advocate for you as best we can.
Yeah, our, our folks are behind those people that are crazy enough to run into a burning building. And we, we are, we are the support staff for, for all those people doing their jobs. We're all kind of a, you know, vital cogs in this machine. You know, it takes, it takes a bunch of staff members in the background to make sure that the police have what they have to do their job. The firefighters, the, the road crews and things like that. It, it, it takes people in the background to make sure they've, they've got what they need to do their jobs.
Okay, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Lynn. I, I have just a comment and a question. Give me the reason the vacancies are not being filled.
Hmm, I, I don't, I really don't know. Uh, I, I think for the longest time, of course, we had a hiring freeze. You know, the people that were in place were actually taking furlough time, you know, unpaid.
Sure.
Um, furlough time. So of course, there was a hiring freeze during then. But I think, you know, just a lot of times, they just don't, I, they're, they're not apt to put new people in place.
And I have to say that, um, one suggestion I had made, I think clerical employees are critical to an operation. Any business, you must have good clerical support. And what we seem to be doing more and more is we throw somebody a laptop and expect them to do their job, let's say code compliance, and then they're expected to do the clerical work on top of it. So we're actually getting half-time code compliance and half-time clerical because they have to go and put in all their orders, which we should actually be having a clerical do that work. And, um, this new thinking makes no sense to me of just let everybody do their own clerical work, but.
We're, we're being run by a temporary contract, um, type of city.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately.
And, um, and I get that we've had a lot of budgetary restraints. Um, and we cut out everything right down to the bone. But, you know, as we see some money coming back in, it's time to just get back to where we were and forget the fluff, forget all the cute things. It's time to get back to our meat and potatoes. We can have dessert down the line. But thank you, thank you for all you do.
Thanks for having us.
Are there any other questions for Lynn? One quick question for Angie, what is the vacancy factor in this year's budget?
The current fiscal year or the proposed fiscal year?
The proposed fiscal year.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
And what is it in the current fiscal year?
Five hundred thousand.
So you've increased it by two hundred thousand. Thank you.
Yes, all right, um, the, why, what's, what's the philosophy behind the increase?
Because of the number of vacancies that are currently, um, there right now. Now hopefully, those will obviously be brought down and, and filled throughout the year. But knowing that we are three-quarters of the way through this fiscal year, uh, when the budget was proposed, knowing that we're, those weren't all going to be filled by July first, yeah.
So, Madam President, and, and it's a whole different, has nothing to do with, and I apologize, but to me, you know, we, we've had these conversations, right? At least as long as I've been on council, so that's four years of all vacancies. And so the process to, the, the HR process, I'm just, uh, you know, I, I understand we have a great economy and maybe we're having trouble hiring people. But the, the, there seems to be, the process seems to have some deficiencies. And so I'm wondering, you know, as we do this, ha, ha, has HR changed their process and how they go about doing the vacancies? You know what I mean? Ha, has something changed? Or are they looking at ways to streamline their HR process?
Um, Madam President, may I start?
Go ahead.
Um, we, Linda is, Linda Sanchez-Gazella, HR Director, is looking to streamline those processes. I know that hiring has certainly gotten faster in the last year. That was something that the mayor told her was a priority, and we are certainly bringing people on more quickly. Initially, it was wanting to bring people in within a, you know, couple of months. And I think we're significantly faster in filling more positions than we have before, but it is still a bit of a process. And because of the backlog before, we're still sort of catching up on that. But I think, you know, my understanding, in particular, as a relatively new administration, just a year and a half in, the empirical evidence from department heads who have been here, who are pretty happy with HR and saying things are moving more quickly. But we do have a number of positions to fill, and then we have things that happen. For example, I'll use treasury as a good example. We have another employee who, who retired, and then internal employees moved up into those positions. Then we have to offer it to internal employees and the next term. So just, it, it takes longer than, than one would expect. But we are certainly, Linda is certainly pushing to, to expedite that process.
I think there are a couple of issues with that. We have watched a number of contract positions that have, have been contract positions that have stayed there, and those positions haven't been hired, which means they're not paying into the system at all. I think we have, have that. I think that we have also heard over a number of years that there were, have been issues of determining whether they were going to keep that position or whether they were going to reclassify that position. And so it's been on hold, which, you know, means that you're not even letting that position out. So I think those are, are definitely, um, issues. And, um, maybe to segue in, Dennis, I know you might have other things to talk about, but I know you and I have talked about a couple of the hiring, um, practices and some of the things that, um, your employees have experienced. Could you enlighten us a little bit on a couple of those things, please?
A couple of them, um, and, and again, the HR, first of all, I want to say the HR department is doing much better than in the past. They, they are doing a good job, and, and we are still working towards that end. There's just a few issues that, that we're still ironing out as far as streamlining. Currently, currently, the one we, we have is, is with Seasonals. We've been trying to hire Seasonals. They come in and take a six-question written test one day. They come back the next week to take their skills test, which takes them about half hour, forty-five minutes. And then a week after that, they come back for an interview. So, um, we're trying to get that streamlined down to that's, all should be able to be done in one day. Then you sign off your background check. We'll call you back when, when you're, for your physical date, so.
Thank you. So would you explain to those that are watching, um, the minimum that you represent in the UAW?
Yes, um, we represent everybody from seasonal staff, uh, part-time parks caretakers, parking revenue collectors, parking enforcement workers, um, employees in the service garage, the mechanics in the service garage, uh, the employees you see out potholing, when you see plowing snow, sewer crew, um, the wastewater, the wastewater plant, the operators and maintenance, uh, employees at the wastewater plant, building maintenance. We have one custodian currently left in the city, so we also represent them.
Okay.
You know, I guess, I guess to, I think everybody's kind of hit on, on the main topics that we're all seeing throughout the city. You know, one of the big issues is recruitment and retention. And again, we've, we've, um, pushed for these contractual services, you know, contractual service line item in every, every department throughout the, uh, the city's budget is just astronomical. I believe there's a lot of efficiencies in-house that we're leaving on, undetermined. And I believe the reason, uh, contracting has begun to look so attractive is because when they look at contracting out a service, every one of our employees at the city of Lansing is a, is a line item budget. It's your, based on your longevity, um, your hourly rate, your fringe and variable, uh, fringe benefits. Every one of our employees carries a, a line item number. Last time I looked, and I haven't, I haven't seen it recently, but it was sixteen thousand dollars for retiree healthcare. Now, over here, there's a number that says pre-funding for retiree healthcare. That's actually the money for my healthcare when I retire. The other, the other frontline one, retiree healthcare, that's paying for our past legacy cost. So when you figure that into every, every employee that you look at getting rid of, and you add that number on top of them, contracting begins to look very, very attractive because it, it looks like it's cheaper. But we're carrying this, and every, every time you reduce that number of employees, that number gets bigger on the ones that are left. If you reduce, if you eliminated all the employees, that number would be, that number would just, that'd, that'd be your unfunded liability right there with, with nobody carry that number. So, um, I guess my main issue is I, I, I believe rather than a chief legacy officer or a chief, um, strat, strategy officer, we need a chief operating officer to go back and begin looking back at a lot of these issues. Because I've seen departments from, whether it was mowing, uh, mowing of the parks, you know, they, they give us a, they give us a bid. We contracted out, we sell the equipment, and we never look back. And that number continues to grow every year that we pay, um, with, with no, basically no oversight. We just, we just pay the bill when they present the bill to us, so. I think we need somebody, somebody in that position to start actually breaking these numbers down to see what's going to happen when we reverse the demographic of our employee to retiree ratio. Right now, we're two to one. You know, the new hires have a lower benefit package. They don't have spousal healthcare at retirement, and they only have retire, retiree healthcare until Medicare age. So what does it look like when we reverse that demographic to where we're actually two to one employee to retiree? What does that do to the legacy cost?
I think Councilmember Spitzley has a question for you.
Thank you, Dennis, and, and thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I don't care what it's called, what, what it's called, whether it's a chief operating officer, a chief financial officer, a chief strategy officer. I think that, you know, as you're looking at, um, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing, whether things make sense, I think it is important for us to, to do that, to, to have a review and then to figure out where we're going. And, and so if we're asking our employees to continue to make sacrifices, I think it's incumbent upon us to figure out, you know, how long that sacrifice is going to last, what that means, what that looks like. Be, you know, if you're asking me to make a five-year sacrifice, I need to know year one, it's going to hurt really bad. And then it's going to get continually better through year five, theoretically. You know, the unfunded liability is, you know, right now, I'm understanding it's twenty-eight percent of our budget right now that we're, that we're spending. That's a lot, that's, that's over a quarter, you know, it, it, that's a lot of money. And so I, I agree. I don't, I don't really care what it's called, but I do think that we need somebody that's doing that specifically. Not only in, you know, for contracts and employees, but for our departments as well.
And, and to that point, seventy-five percent of the unfunded liability lies with current retirees. So the active, the active employees can't balance that. The, you know, we're twenty-five percent of the unfunded liability. We, we can't balance that seventy-five percent of that unfunded liability on our act, we won't, we won't have anybody working for us.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I, I know we're discussing the, the green study. There was some money, I believe, allocated for that, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. You know, I would see that fall, again, falling under this purview of this chief op, chief operating officer as he's going through, looking at these, our operations and, and whether we contract out, you know, how do we get green? You know, my, my thought on having a study done would be, how would it be implemented? When would it be implemented, or would we study it and it, it sit and, and not get implemented? I, I would, you know, I think our money would be better spent having that chief operating officer going. And, and again, throughout the city, each department is kind of siloed. There's not a lot of flow back and forth, from my opinion, of between the departments, um, you know, how can, you know, building maintenance, um, needs this done over here. Well, we have a concrete crew that on a rain day could come in and pour that inside, you know, as an example, we did in the garage, um, you know, but it's, it's not, it's not opportunities we think about a lot of times without, without that communication, so.
Are there, uh, questions for Dennis at this time? Any questions? Um, I, the one question I have, and we did ask, um, police, and I'm going to ask, um, fire as well as Teamsters and UAW, how often are you brought together and, and asked either as union leadership or as employees about different redundancies or economy ways of looking at a department and things that are happening and, and then those ideas worked on?
I, I'm pretty much in constant contact with superintendent level, you know, that, and, and also the public service director on, on fairly regular occasion. And I do bring up, bring up, I, you know, or options that we could do. You know, one of the big ones is the trash, the trash pickup. You know, and I think that is another issue this, uh, chief operating officer would look at is our, our revenue, revenue generating departments and expanding those, growing those. So we're bringing in that revenue, you know? You're never going to make money off police and fire or parks and recreation. I mean, that's, that's not the goal of those. That's, that's, uh, quality of life issues. But we do have a few departments that do generate revenue. How do we expand that and, and grow that? That I don't think, I don't think is looked at often enough, so.
Lynn?
Well, Dennis gives his opinion before he's asked. But we're rare, but hardly, hardly any of us are, are, are ever asked. They, they just don't ask us. They, you know, a lot of times the answers are too difficult to bear. But, um, I, I, I agree with Dennis. There's a lot of revenue we could be generating that we're not, mainly because the, the staffing levels. It's, it's as if you're, you know, we keep, we keep setting our departments up for. It's, it's as if you're, you know, we keep, we keep setting our departments up for failure. If we don't staff them and if we don't do the, the job the way it should be done, then it, it'll be easier just to outsource it. But you've set it up for failure. And that makes, that makes the, you know, the decision to outsource it easier for some reason.
Dan?
I, I would say that it's better now than it used to be. We're communicating, we're trying to find ways. But as Dennis said, we're really not here to make money. We're here to provide the service. There's ways to save money. I think our new chief is heading in the right direction. Right now, we're trying to get our operational direction found. We're kind of in a weird spot right now where we're trying to find our direction. I, I know that when Chief Purchase was here, he was very acceptance, accepted to our ideas. And so far, Chief Mackey's done the same thing. Been good to work with. And I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
I guess a comment and then a question for Dennis. I, I appreciate the support for the C R, or C R O, sorry, as well. You know, we, we truly need somebody that is kind of, you know, scientifically looking at the strengths and weaknesses of our budget and, and the organizational, organizational structure of the city and whether or not it makes sense. And when you talk about the city's assets, you know, are we heating and cooling and, and maintaining and operating wings of buildings we don't need to be and, and buildings that we don't need to be? So, I absolutely support that. A quick question, and it's just curiosity. Councilwoman Spitzley and myself, we were on the Parks Board back in two thousand and twelve. So, we were there when we actually started talking about contracting with United. And I know I had, I had my opinion at the time, you know, where that would go and how that contract would grow. And again, just curiosity, do you believe that we would actually be saving money if we had that in-house today as opposed to this contract with United?
I do, because, you know, and again, that was all seasonal staff that, that we were using, that you were utilizing to do those. That particular operation hadn't been overhauled in twenty years. You know, we came in and did it when they first tried to do it and set them up like commercial, commercial landscaping companies. And they were, they were getting it done, but they had already made their decision that they were contracting it out, so.
We want to thank you very much for coming down this evening and sharing your time with us and your thoughts from your memberships. We appreciate the work of all the men and women, women that you represent. And we thank you for being part of the budget process today. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for inviting us.
We have the budget review and policies and wrap-up we will take up at the meeting on the twentieth. We do have a budget policy that Councilmember Vice President Spatafor asked to be passed out. And if you could quickly go over that, Councilmember Spatafor?
Sure, it's in front of you, I believe, very small item. We met in public service. It's one item that we talked about in the Public Service Committee. I've had a few folks mention to me some of the dangerous intersections where we do have bike lanes, particularly one that comes to mind, but not necessarily a target area. I'm sorry, can you hear now? Good. So, in public service, we talked about some of the bike lanes where there's some trouble spots and intersections, particularly one Saginaw at Capitol. And then there's others, Kalamazoo and things like that. I asked Director Calpatrick if there was a way to put stanchions in that would limit the ability of vehicles to get in, but still removable, so we could sweep and plow. And he said, "Well, funny, you should mention that. We have some of these things already that we had purchased for a different project, and they didn't get put in." And I said, "I'd like to make sure that they did get used," and he was very agreeable to that. So, I wanted to put a priority in here, talking about non-motorized vehicle safety. Public service is encouraged to develop a strategy and program to protect bike lanes at busy intersections to increase rider safety and educate motorists on proper interaction with bike lanes at intersections. If possible, the barriers should be removable to facilitate street sweeping and snow plowing. Not looking for a citywide deployment necessarily, but maybe some pilot projects in the first year and as we generate revenue through the scooter, scooter tax or whatever, scooter assessment, scooter fees. There we go. We can possibly expand those, so that's what I was looking for.
So, that's something that if you would think about when we bring up the priorities next week. Next, Don, we have the resolution on the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And also, at your desk was some pages that had to do with the proposed Community Development Block Grant budget that have holes punched in them. Don?
If I, could I speak to?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to speak to that real quick. Those additional pages that were at your, each spot there, that is because we received the final HUD allocation. We had mentioned before that we had preliminary numbers. And so, this is an amendment to the proposed budget to adjust for that. So, I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you. Okay.
And I was here a few weeks ago, I guess, to address this briefly. We did get our actual numbers from HUD. And you recall, we had slight increases in CDBG and ESG and a somewhat surprisingly large decrease to home of about eighty-seven thousand dollars. What you have in front of you today, what I'm asking for approval is, is approval of the amended action plan. You recall the summary of the action plan that you had last time. And I believe staff has provided you an updated version of this. And on this document, most of the changes are relatively modest, except for that unfortunately, one relatively large change relative to the home. But having said that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
As we all knew, we were waiting for the report. We now have it. Are there any questions on this? Seeing none, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution adopting the amended CDBG Annual Action Plan for FY nineteen twenty.
All right, we have a motion for it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next thing that we have in front of us, we have the executive order that was the name for Beacon Park. And what we need is a recommendation to approve the executive order. Yes, Vice President?
Madam President, I move that the council approve the executive order, executive order, sorry, two zero nine dash zero five.
All right, we have a motion. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, poses, passes unanimously. Before we get into the discussion on the supplemental appropriation on the ramp, which might also be taken up further next week, is we had asked the city attorney to look into the assessment process for the flood plane. We had a number of council members that were concerned about the residential cost for that. And we had asked if there was a way that the city could pay the residential portion of that. And we asked the city attorney to investigate that. So, we're going to ask you to pull the mic close, Mr. City Attorney. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. So, it's a special assessment, it's covered by state law, covered by the city charter and the city ordinance. And one thing about special assessments, it must be done with equal protection to all the properties that are benefited. So, we're talking about properties here. So, to actually pull out a group that is receiving a benefit in the district would not be legal. Can the city, so, so that's that question. You can't designate and say the residential can't pay and the business must pay if they're in the same district because we're dealing with square footage of structures and properties. However, under the charter and under the ordinance, the city council has the ability to designate that fifty percent of it be paid or some number can be shared by the city and the benefit of properties. There also is a procedure.
Let me stop you right there. Are you saying all the properties?
Would be, it would be, yes, it would have to be done equally to all the properties, not pulling out one class versus the other. You also have the option, and it's in the ordinance, there's a procedure for allowing installment payments over, such as you can do that with streets and when you pave streets. There's that procedure to, to spread it over a number of years. So, we have those options. Is there anything further? I mean, I think I.
Are there any questions for the city attorney? We do have this evening, the public hearing on this. And so, what we, and, and we're not taking action tonight. What we will be having to decide at the next council committee of a whole meeting is whether we move forward with the mapping process or not and based on the comments that we hear from the public this evening. Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have the figure before me right now. What is the total figure of what we would be assessing?
The total figure is, I think it's three hundred, three sixty-four.
So, that's the amount that's being spread out among the people? Correct. And the business, yes.
Right. And of the residential, it was something like forty-eight thousand. Yes, Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor?
Maybe I might have misunderstood, but I thought it was three sixty-ish. And then we were paying half of it, and then the residents and the businesses were paying the other, the other half. Is that not how it was working? Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein?
And you said we could, that a percentage could be, so we could actually take one hundred percent of this, spread it across all commercial, all industry and all residential property?
The city, if the city wants to pay for the mapping, yes. Or some portion of it. It's just, the concept is there has to be, if we're dealing with a special assessment, it needs to be shown that it benefits the property and it has to be equal across the board based upon some formula, whether it be frontage or square footage. In this case, my understanding is the assessor use square footage of the building.
Okay. Any other, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. That seems fair. I mean, I, I was concerned. I would have preferred us to be able to pay for those residents. You know, I, it's still, it still is very distressing to me that, you know, the, the neighborhoods were the greatest impacter or the folks that are least able to afford. It's extremely distressing to me when, you know, there's a news article in the, in the State Journal and you only, and only one side of the coin has been spoken to, which are the people that are in favor. That, that's, that, that, that was extremely distressing to me. I just, I will not be supporting this at all. There's got to be a better way. And, you know, I, I get, I understand about the flooding issue. But again, you know, someone who, who is just holding on, if they don't have flood insurance now, there's a good reason why, and they can't afford it. So, if they can't afford a thousand dollars, they're not going to be able to afford four thousand dollars. And, you know, an additional one hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year is, is, is death to some people. And so, I, I just can't, I cannot, I can't support this. I just think it's, it's wrong, and I'm, it's unfortunate that we can't find a way to help those, those folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going, I'm going to piggyback on what my colleague has said. The folks that are going to be assessed this, in my ward, are the absolutely stable to pay this. And a hundred dollars may not seem like much to some folks, but a hundred dollars is a lot of money to other people. And even the businesses that are in my ward in these areas are not high, high-earning businesses. This would be very hard for them also. So, I'm not going to support it. I think, I'm just looking right here, I see five hundred dollars for paperless initiative. Maybe we could use that.
Thank you. With that, I wanted to go to the resolution that had passed the committee at the last committee of a whole meeting that dealt with the Townsend Ramp appropriation. And I had received questions from council members on some of the initiatives. And you, Angie or Sam might not be able to answer, Samantha might not be able to answer those questions tonight. But some of them that we had was the, such as the city website replacement. Who's doing that work and how long ago was it that we redid the website to begin with?
Sure, so we redid the city website. It's been five or six years ago. I apologize, I don't know the exact year. We, Valerie on our staff, our communications manager, has been talking to a couple of local firms about replacement. Honestly, we just find that it's not extremely user-friendly. There's a lot of content. And part of the other challenge is that when we go to make changes, like even changing, for example, the color palette, some of those changes cost ten or fifteen thousand dollars. And so, we've really struggled with maintaining the website, and it's quite cost prohibitive. So, we were looking, I know Valerie has talked to Gravity Works in Old Town and then Revise, which is a Michigan company, it's not a Lansing-based company, but I know she's talked to both of them. So, that has not been contracted, that contract has not been signed yet, but it is something that we are interested in doing to have a website that's a little more user-friendly. You can't even pull it up on your phone. It's really hard and really prohibitive. So, we want to have something that everybody is able to, to use more readily.
I know our staff was trained on the new website. Can you remember when, when that was done, Sherry?
I cannot remember specifically, but I won't even be here for six years until this July. So, it has to be less than five or six years that we, that we got the new website. It was probably maybe three years ago?
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley?
Well, that's why I asked, because I think it was changed when I was a council member. And I've, I've, this is my fourth year. So, I just wanted to, that's why I raised an eyebrow, I was wondering.
There was also asking for additional clarification on the citywide paperless initiative. If you could speak to that?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
What I would specifically look for is, we have a certain amount, it's the five hundred thousand. You know, are there going to be costs in subsequent years, costs for maintenance? What are going to be the costs after we do this? Is this initial, is this the whole thing, or is there going to be subsequent costs after that?
That's a good question. I, I, I think this, we're hoping that this will be the totality of the cost. We realize as we were talking about, you know, making some changes in City Hall, being more effective with all of our space, we have a lot of paper. We pay for storage off-site. And so, we have a number of departments that pay for storage off-site. We haven't been going through those boxes. We have honestly, probably a lot of things we don't need. And so, really starting to look at getting rid of some of those things, perhaps having someone come onsite and shred a lot of documents, and also digitizing documents, which is a pretty expensive process because you can't just have someone scan it. You have to be able to make sure that, you know, ten years from now, the next me or the next Angie can find the document from ten years ago. And so, really having a, a system to code all of the documents. One of the people we had spoken to suggested like a barcode. And so, you can have, for example, if it's a, you know, a number of documents from city council, they would all have the same barcode, and that would all go into one digital folder. But that's a relatively expensive process. So, our hope is that, my understanding is that the five hundred thousand would be the entire cost. But we have had folks who said it would be more expensive. So, the idea was to move in this direction, get it started. But obviously, we would have a more concrete idea of the specific cost in totality before we started.
Are there any other questions from council members? Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. And I, and I, and I appreciate it, I appreciate the response. Thank you for that. But that kind of gets back to my, my concern. And, and, and it's not any criticism on anybody. I think we all are doing the best we can. And, and I've always said, you know, we all have the same goal for the city, which is a healthy city, a financially, you know, sound city. But how we get there is, is, is a lot of times where the rubber meets the road, and that's kind of where the disagreements happen. So, you know, the, the fact, you know, the citywide paperless initiative, you know, that would be something, you know, we need to look at that. We need to look at whether or not, you know, We need to look at whether or not, you know, after we pay the half million, are we gonna need an annual budget for someone to maintain the software, maintain the digitizing? You know, do we have somebody that's, you know? So, and those are the questions, you know, how much is it gonna cost? So three years down the road, we're still doing storage, we're still doing maintenance. You know, we've gotta maintain it, software goes, you know, software goes out of, I'm trying to say, my thought is out of business, but software becomes outdated. And so those, to me, are questions, that's a lot of money. And so those are questions that, you know, I think need to be addressed and answered before, you know, I wish I would have, you know, I wish we would have known and I would have looked at this before I went to the financial health team meeting because you see all the issues that are happening and, but that's a lot of money to, and not have those questions answered down the road.
Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, just very quickly.
And before you start, I wanna apologize to the audience. We are just finishing up Committee of a Whole and we will start briefly. Councilmember Hussein?
I was just gonna say that, I agree. And, you know, I wonder when we are right now looking to prioritize, you know, how much of a priority is this truly? And so I wonder what the annual cost of the city is in terms of off-site storage, et cetera. So I'd like to have that information if possible before we, you know, make a final decision. And then when we, you know, when you talk about the city website replacement, you know, I understand that that is just the nature of technology, that it becomes obsolete very quickly and you have to, it's just so frustrating, and I guess I just wanna voice this. We push everybody, we push everybody to the computer, we're told to push everybody to the city's website. And as soon as we, again, because I was also on council, I've only been on council for three and a half years the last time we did the website, just as people get comfortable with the website and how to interface with the website, and same thing with Lansing Connect, it's like rounding the next thing. And I know, again, a lot of that is just the nature of technology, but goodness, I wish we could find a solution to that.
Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I think all of these are really nice, but I do not think with what we're hearing about the financial situation that we're in, that this is the time to start initiatives. I would rather wait until we have somebody in place to actually delve deep into our city operations and see what we actually need. $600,000 is a lot of money. And when we're asking the people to come up with $300,000, I'm certainly not gonna support this. The rest of it I can support, but not this at this time. And I'm not saying never, just not at this time.
Okay. With that, we will have this on the Committee of a Whole agenda at our next meeting. We will be finalizing the budget priorities. If there are issues that councilmembers have or things that they would like considered, please get them to us by Wednesday so that we can look at those and have further conversations with those. And with that, I believe that takes us through everything and we are, we will adjourn and we will take two minutes to stretch and then get back out here for the council meeting. We are adjourned.